Good morning. I called order the June 23, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I see you please stand and join me in a flag salute honoring our country and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public citizens input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. The consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax role adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, approval of the public forum agenda. Are there any items that wish to be amended or pulled by commissioners?
No.
Seeing no objections, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We'll move to action items for today. Item number one.
RFA 176-20 UAV program grant application with Under Sheriff Meander with Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Brent.
Good morning. This is Hon. Good morning. I'm here today to ask permission to apply for a grant through the Dane G. Hanson Foundation. Normally, per county policy, we can go ahead and apply for the grant, and then once we are given the grant, then we come back and try to get a commissioner's signature and approval through another RFA. However, this particular grant requires us to have a signature from someone from the county commission, electronic signature before we actually, or when we apply for it. So that's why we're asking for permission first, because we do need permission to have an electronic signature on the grant application. What we're wanting to do is we're wanting to apply for a grant for the Celine County UAV program, which is the unmanned aerial vehicle program that we have. The purpose of this grant is to seek additional staff training for first responders within the Celine County Sheriff's Office, Celine County Rural Fire Department, Salina Police Department, and the City of Salina Fire Department. There's two parts to this. The first part would be the Part 107 certification, where you actually get your license. Sheriff's Office would like to send two. Rural Fire would like to send one. Salina Fire Department would like to send three. And the Salina Police Department would like to send four to get certified. After certification is done, then we would send them to an advanced four-day training, which we kind of venture off onto our own specialties. Law enforcement would go to our section, and fire would go to their own. And that's where they start using the FLIR and the cameras and all that to practice and get used to operating the drone in those response scenarios. The original grant was found by Michelle Barkley with Emergency Management. And fortunately, Isaiah Grogan, who's the intern with Emergency Management, did a lot of the legwork on this grant and sent it over to me. And then we kind of tweaked it a little bit, put our stats in there and numbers. So originally, we had asked for approval to apply for $26,900. However, that's gone down a little bit. Now we're at $25,700. That's what we're hoping for. We may not get it at all. We may get some of it in part. If we do not get all of that, the county will take precedence in the awards that we get. So Sheriff's Office and first responders out in the county would be the first ones to go to the training. So that's what my RFA is here today, to get your permission to approve this grant.
Well, it sounds good to me. I guess my question would be, with the City of Salina Fire Department, City of Salina Police Department being involved, is there any obligation on their part to participate in this portion of the action or not?
Yes. Michelle with Emergency Management has worked pretty close with the Fire Department and the Police Department. And what she is going to do, and she's here if you would like to ask her specific questions, but we're trying to get together a group that can respond accordingly. Members of the Salina Police Department have actually come out into the county to assist us on calls with the drone, looking for evidence. We've mapped fire calls. Also, the Sheriff's Office has gone into the city and assisted the Salina Police Department with calls inside the city when they weren't able to with our drone. And I know with the Fire Department, we've responded to a fire and provided footage of the fire to the Fire Department. So I think it's a win-win situation for everybody that's included in this grant.
Well, it's nice to see the city and the county trying to do something together.
Yeah, we, I'll tell you what, we, when we get together for trainings, we do cross trainings. It goes very smoothly. It's, it works out great.
Okay. Questions, comments from commissioners?
This grant is for just the classes, the training, the certifications. And then when it comes to, you have just the one drone now?
We have, currently, we have two drones. We've got a Matrice 210 and the Mavic Pro. And the Police Department, without them being here, I believe they have two as well. I'm not sure what the Fire Department has. But the initial training would be the Part 107 licensing, which you take the test after your class. And then once you receive your test, then you can go on to additional training, the advanced training. And then there'd be no budgetary expense to us, because the people that will be attending this are already employed by the Sheriff's Office.
No backfilling or?
No, sir.
Other questions, comments? Is there any public comment? If not, I would bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Dane G. Hanson Foundation grant application for the Salina, Celine County UAV program as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 176-20 UAV program grant application. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Under Sheriff Meander.
My question now is, once that you have approved this, when I submit that, I'm going to, I have to be the one that's submitting it through the computer. Whose name do I use? Is that yours, commissioners, as far as the, on the grant? I provided a copy of the grant application with the RFA. I don't know if you had time to look that over or not, but.
I would assume that would be appropriate.
Okay. I'll go ahead and use your name then. Thank you.
It gets used a lot in other ways, too. Item number two.
RFA 177-20 Annual WIC Letter of Understanding for Celine and Ellsworth County with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. So for the last 10 years, we have had an ongoing relationship with the Ellsworth County Health Department to provide dietitian services for their WIC program two days a month. They do not have a workload great enough that supports hiring a dietitian. And so this ongoing relationship has been necessary and has been helpful in supporting their provision of WIC. Up until last year, it had just been a verbal agreement. And then last year, the Kansas WIC program at the state level wanted it more formalized in a letter, which you guys did sign last year. And to be honest, this one hasn't changed. And if I had it my way, we would just be able to sign one and then be done with it until there was changes. But the Kansas WIC program wants it done every year. So that's why we're here today, to have this signed again, to go with the Kansas WIC application for their next grant year. There are no costs associated with this, especially considering mileage, because the WIC dietitian that provides these services two days a month lives in Ellsworth. So on those two days, she just goes to the Ellsworth Health Department, provides those services, so we don't have to pay mileage either. All costs for staff time are covered 100% under the WIC program, so they pay for that time as well. So there's no cost, additional cost to the county for that. Alternatives, of course, sign the letter along with myself and continue services. You can send this back for more information if you have additional questions that we can't answer today, or don't sign this letter and discontinue this long-time relationship. I would recommend that we do sign this letter and continue this relationship. It's not only good for both of our counties as far as being able to continue to keep relationships, especially as future projects might be on the horizon, but also to help them provide services for a hard-to-find and hard-to-fill type of position, when we're talking about dietitians as well. And I've already talked through the budget impact, which there will not be any.
All right. Questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I would take, entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the letter of understanding with Ellsworth County for shared WIC programs.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 177-20 Annual WIC Letter of Understanding for Celine and Ellsworth County. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jason. While you're here, can you give us a brief update on what's going on in the Health Department here?
So the last 10 days have been, well, stressful a little bit, to say the least. We have had, I would say in the last 10 days, a significant increase in the number of cases here in Celine County, considering that for two and a half months, give or take, we only had about 32 cases over that time period. And in the past 10 days, we've had over 20 at least. I don't have specific numbers in front of me. At this time, staff are monitoring 20 active cases, or a little bit more than 20, as well as easily, I think, two dozen or so quarantined individuals as well. We are able, I think, to link back all of the cases, so the concern about community spread is there, but is not as, as big of a concern as if we were not able to figure out where most of these came from. We have, at present, four big data indicators that we look at. And it's the same four data indicators that we looked at when we were looking at, you know, what to do with phases of moving out of the lockdown, of following that ASTRO plan. And those four, I'll just refresh those real quick, but they are, of course, case numbers, arising cases, hospitalizations, hospital resource use. And we look at that one, too, as well, since Salina Regional, is a regional hospital, and they do have the potential for, for caring for COVID patients from other, other smaller hospitals. And then the last one is the number of deaths. And although that we have seen a rise in the cases, pretty significant over the last 10 days, which does cause us quite a bit of concern, however, those other three indicators have continued to remain flat. So that is a little bit of good news in that sense. At this point, we are not considering any additional action as far as trying to impose any other type of restrictions. But if those other indicators should start to change, or we see changes in hospitalizations and so forth, then that may be something that we will have to readdress at that time.
Do we have any hospitalizations at this point?
Not that I'm aware of. Their last report was about a week ago, and then I should have another report from them again today.
All right. Well, thank you for all the news, and thank you for your hard work and your staff and everyone at the Health Department. We appreciate it greatly. And, you know, I, I just can't stress enough to, to maintain the, the things that are being handed down by the CDC and our local health department and the governor's office and social distancing and, and just be aware of what's going on around you. And this thing is not going to go away. We, we need to pay attention.
You know, it's interesting that you say that. I read an article the other day, and they were quoting an epidemiologist, and I can't think of his name since I don't have the article in front of me. But it was interesting that he characterized it as, America needs to basically quit seeing this or thinking of when the next wave is going to come and consider this as a continuous forest fire. Basically, like a forest fire, you get hotspots that keep coming up. You get one area tamped down, another one pops up. And we're kind of already seeing that as we go. It flares up in the area, dies back down, and, and so we're just, this is going to be an ongoing event with no expiration date in the near future. So we continue to learn how to live with it, heavily focus on people making those individual risk assessments when they go somewhere. And if they need to wear, if they go into a place and they can't maintain social distancing, then they need to wear a mask or make the responsible decision and not go into that establishment or that event. You know, we, we can't sit here and police everybody's individual actions all day long. It's just not feasible. So therefore, you know, everybody, including ourselves, has to take responsibility for our own risk as well in making those decisions.
Well said. It is an individual choice, an individual responsibility, and you need to, to take care of yourself, and maybe we can slow it down doing that. But, and again, I noticed the number of young people that are, that are being affected. And for, for those, initially, it was the older generation that was supposed to be so careful, and, and the younger people thought that didn't mean them, I guess. And there's certainly a, a number of them that are being affected by this now.
Yes, sir.
So as Jason says, we need to individually be vigilant on what our actions are and take assessment and act accordingly.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for your coming today.
All right. Thank you for your continued support, all of you. Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 178-20 COVID-19 Mandated Plan Changes Amendment, Celine County Benefit Group Plan. Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This request for action is to request approval and signature of the COVID-19 Mandated Plan Changes Amendment for our health plan. To the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the CARES Act, this amendment provides certain benefits to our insured employees through the emergency period. Alternatives for action are to authorize signature of the amendment, or do not authorize. Authorizing signature, we are mandated to provide the benefits anyway, so this is just documentation showing that we are following those mandates. No budget impact at this time. It's unknown if, what effects that COVID-19 is going to have on our health plan, maybe for future renewals, but no direct budget impact at this time.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners? I really appreciate the fact that you're on top of it, Marilyn, and continuing to do things to, hopefully, as best we can, protect our employees and ensure them in the proper manner, to the best of our abilities and, and our financial ability to, to take care of it. So is there any public comment regarding this RFA? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the amendment as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 178-20 COVID-19 Mandated Plan Changes Amendment, Celine County Group Benefit Plan. Further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for coming before us today.
Thank you.
That is the end of today's action items. We will move into informational items with item number one.
Road aggregate discussion.
Looks like we'll have Darren Fischel and Justin Mater from our Road and Bridge and Engineering Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is a road upgrade discussion. This is a continuation of, of this discussion that we started two weeks ago. This is to evaluate the progress of the one-mill road upgrade and the gravel road safety upgrade line items and establish a process for moving forward. There are currently no projects selected for the commission to utilize these funds. We are providing the commission with information and seeking direction. The Road and Bridge Department will present a systematic approach utilizing quantifiable goals on how Celine County will create a plan to utilize the one-mill road upgrade funds. We are seeking the commission's input and direction to this process. This briefing is to discuss the process and not the actual details of the plan and to get some input on the plan itself. I'll turn it over to Justin.
Okay. So I've put together a few slides of, of our process, but really, you know, as Darren mentioned, you know, here, we're here to talk about the systematic approach. You know, how are we going to eat this elephant, you know, we call our gravel road system? So as you're all very well aware, we have four road classifications in Celine County. We've got our asphalt-surfaced, our load-bearing gravel-surfaced roads, our non-load-bearing gravel-surfaced roads, and our earth roads, which does not have any aggregates on it. But as, as Darren mentioned, we're here to talk about our gravel roads. And so with our, with our gravel roads, you know, we've got our load-bearing roads, which has sufficient aggregate base to carry truck traffic. Also, you're going to have minimal running after a rain event. And then we have our non-load-bearing roads, which does not have an aggregate base. It might have aggregate on the surface, but we just call that a surface course. It doesn't have any load-bearing capacity. And so, you know, after a rain event, it will be a muddy road with some ruts in it. We do have two revenue sources to upgrade and maintain these roads. The budgeted items are aggregate and aggregate haul line items, as well as the, the labor and equipment to install those aggregates. And then we have, for our non-budgeted items, is our 124 account, which is our special road construction, commonly referred to as the, the one-mill fund.
Justin, if I could stop for just a second.
Yes.
We have identified, I assume, by name, these, these gravel road types. Which one falls under which category? Is that correct?
Yes. It's, Darren and I have been working on that, but that's also one of the processes, one of the steps that I'm going to get to later on, you know, of when we identify, really, because that's one of the first steps, is what we have now, and then where we're going to be. So, but yeah, we'll be getting to that.
Down the road, I think that might be a, a useful tool for commissioners, is to have that list at their disposal, either on the website or a list for us individually, so that we can kind of, if we get that call.
Sure, sure.
Relate to the type of road that it really is supposed to be.
Right, right. So we've got, you know, there's, there's always a bunch of questions with gravel roads, but I've identified four questions here, and we can always add, add to this list as we get going through this process. But the first question is, you know, do we provide a different level of service on, on different gravel roads? You know, which, which roads do we want to carry heavier traffic, you know, and, as well as the characteristics, you know, the, the width, you know, four slopes, you know, ditch slopes, that kind of stuff. So the second question is, is regarding our design standards. You know, we've got design standards that were created in 1998. I think we ought to take another look at those design standards and, and maybe come up with something that's a little more realistic of what we're, you know, what's, we're actually going to, going to construct. And then it gets into, what does it mean to upgrade or improve a gravel road? You know, is this, you know, are we talking about new construction, or are we talking about maintenance? And I think that's, it's, right now, it's very unclear what, what it means to upgrade a gravel road. And then the fourth question is, you know, really, what can we afford? You know, what, what can we do to bring up to the level of service that we, we want, that we desire for a certain grouping of roads, as well as, as maintain that level of service? So next, we, oh, you might have to switch it for me. There we go. Okay. So next, we get into the systematic approach that the county administrator Phil and Darren and I kind of came up with. And, and this is really what we wanted to talk about and get your input, get your buy-in and blessing on how we move forward with this. And so we, we've identified six steps. The first one, the first step being, how has the Road and Bridge spent the one-mill fund in the past? You know, and this can be accomplished with a, a simple report to the commissioners. The second step is to clearly define the road classification types that we have out in the field right now. You know, so which roads are asphalt, which ones are load-bearing, which ones are non-load-bearing gravel and earth? So define what we have. And then with this step, I think we also ought to look at the road design standards. You know, what do we want these, these to really look like? Then define the, what it means to, to have an upgrade of a gravel road. You know, is, is it an upgrade that, that must meet our design standards? Or, you know, certain operations are, you know, we, we consider a maintenance operation that doesn't necessarily need to meet those design standards. And so kind of hash that out. And we feel that this would be, you know, best, our best approach at this would be a study session out at the Road and Bridge Training Room, you know, where we can have discussion and bring up different maps. And, you know, you never know where discussion's going to lead, and that way, we've got our, our data and information in front of us that we can, we can pull up for you guys. The third step would be define which roads should meet which road classification. So the, you know, step two is define what we have. Step three is, okay, this is what we have, but this is what we want. You know, this is our end goal of what we want to get to. And so, and I think this is, this is going to be an interesting step as we, we hash out where we want to go. You know, and I think this is the, the appropriate time to evaluate our existing rural primary road system, you know, that was developed. And we can kind of take a look at that. Some, some people refer to it as a grade system, but look at that, you know, is, is do we want to modify that existing system? Or do we want to scrap it and create a, a brand-new system, you know, as, as we move forward? Again, we think that this would be best, best served as having a, a study session out at the Road and Bridge Training, Training Room, and then possibly with the road tour afterwards, if we want to go look at, at some particular roads. Let's go to the next.
While you're on that point.
Yes.
I would be in favor of the road tour. I'm just a visual person, like to get out and actually have you show me what's the difference between this and which ones we're thinking about.
Sure, sure.
So I've got time to do that. Would, would find that very interesting.
Okay. All right. The fourth step would be to determine the cost to get each road to the desired classification. So, you know, and the first thing that I, come to my mind is, what do we want included in cost? You know, so, and, and really where I'm, I'm going with that is, if the Road and Bridge Department is going to be upgrading some of these roads, you know, is the, the labor and equipment, which is already in another line item, you know, going to be included in that cost? Or is it just going to be the extra materials that we have to purchase for that? But I think we need to really hammer out, you know, what, what those items are going to be. And then start that discussion of, you know, what can our, our maintenance forces perform, and what do we really need to do as far as hire contractors, you know, to, to get to those, that end goal? And, and a lot of this can be presented in a report to the commissioners, probably at a, at a public hearing like this here. The fifth step is to create a detailed plan to spend those annual allocations. And so first, we got to agree on what we're willing to spend each year to upgrade our gravel roads. And then prioritize those road projects. And I see that, you know, being on a, on a map with a year that each one of those projects are going to be constructed. But we do need to, through this whole process, need to keep in mind that, that we need to maintain a, a certain level of flexibility, you know, because you never know what hap, you know, things can come up, you know, like the year we had last year, where it just rained and rained and rained and rained, and a lot of our, our time and forces, you know, and money that we had and aggregates that we had on hand, you know, went to just repairing roads. So we just need to make sure we maintain some flexibility with that. So, and then the sixth step, which I think is probably going to be one of the more difficult And then the sixth step, which I think is probably gonna be one of the more difficult steps, is, you know, how do we communicate these road classifications to the public? Because public expectations, you know, really, you know, need to match what our plan is. You know, and so how do we get people to understand, you know, this particular road is gonna be a non-load bearing road? You know, and when it's muddy, it's gonna rut, and it might be a little slick. You know, and I think that's, that's the, probably the hardest part of everything, is trying to get those expectations to match ours, so. So this is our six-step process, and you know, and so here, I guess, we're looking for your guys' thoughts, opinions, modifications to this system, additions, and really, your buy-in on this, so.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Yes.
I think it's okay under five to really go out and prioritize road projects, and at some point say, this is identified but not funded.
Oh, sure.
I mean, I think it's, you know, and because just say to the public, we get that this needs to be done, we don't have the money right now, but it's on our list. I think that's helpful for people to say, we can only do so much.
Right.
And then, you know, maybe there are alternate ways to fund a project, if they decide to create a benefit district or whatever, to do that. But identified but not funded is a term that I like to use, so just think about that.
Yeah, and then that's where I think the, you know, when we prioritize road property, that create a project map with timeframe of construction, you know, and have that out there on our website, you know, and say, this is, this is our plan. Yeah, this road, we identify, it needs, you know, needs to have some work on it, but we're not gonna get to it until 2030.
Until money is available.
Right.
I find it interesting that you have two types of gravel roads, the load bearing and the non-load bearing, and to differentiate and identify which ones, because I know there are some roads out there that I think we would categorize as load bearing loads, and yet, when it rains, they rut and get pretty.
Right.
So I would assume that process would then mean upgrading that load bearing road to where it really does do exactly what it says here.
Correct, correct. You know, and there's a tremendous amount of gray area in between those, you know, two classifications of load bearing and non-load bearing. You know, there's, you gotta draw a line in the sand and say, okay, you know, this is, we think, because, you know, because there's another thing, we can go out and, you know, we can hire a company to take borings of all our roads, to figure out how much, you know, aggregate we have out there. You know, that's a big project, I don't know if that really has that much value. I think most of the value we have is in the heads of our, well, Darren, you know, the road supervisor, the maintainers are out there, are really how the roads function. And to me, it's my opinion that we base a lot of our assumptions on our existing system off of their knowledge, and not off of, you know, this huge list of borings that we take on our roads.
And to me, load bearing load, road, during a rain event, it would be like, we would need to, the standard pickup truck cars and school buses. I mean, if it's raining, we're not gonna have roads, other than asphalt roads, that would support a 40 or 50-ton semi going down the road without tearing it up. It's, it just doesn't happen that way.
Yeah, you know, when I say a rain event too, I mean, that's, yeah, if you get a three inches of rain, you know, over 36 hours, there's nothing gonna hold up to that, you know? But if we get those three inches of rain, you know, on an hour and a half, you know, where a lot of that, you know, runs off and doesn't soak in, I mean, those are two completely different rain events, and our roads are gonna perform differently, so it's, I mean, everything's kind of got this, is very subjective on how we talk about it.
Do you rate all of our roads? I mean, I know that there's so many hundreds of miles that you probably can't do them all, but do you rate them A, B, C, or what needs to be, you know, so the squeaky wheel doesn't always get the money?
No, we don't. No, we don't. And I think this is a system where we identify.
Right.
Those different rates. So I, yeah, I think that's something that we need to have.
And then that's something other counties do, I assume, and?
Less than what you would think.
Okay.
I don't think there's very many of them, especially the county unit systems, you know, where they gotta maintain the road, you know, all the roads in there. It's, most of them aren't that sophisticated.
I would say, for paved roads, there are often grading systems, but for aggregate roads, it's much less common.
Yes.
Makes sense, yeah, makes sense.
Any other comments?
Well, my thoughts, when the one mil was put into place, that was to find funding for engineering and road and bridge to identify places that needed improvement, whether it be changing a dirt road to a gravel road. I know there's been talk about traffic patterns, and if this dirt road was changed to a aggregate road, it would lessen the travel on other routes that were destroying roads, and this and that. Or whether it be a flooding area, Ohio Street South, that is low, that needs built up. The difference between maintaining and improving, or improvement is pretty, I can define it in my mind, and I would hate to see this funding moved into any type of maintenance. I would like to say it, see it stay as a true improving of a road, whether it's improving it from a non-load bearing to a load bearing, or whatever the case would be. But I don't think it would be that difficult to identify unfunded projects and have a priority list put together that this funding would be used for. And I think a study session out at the road and bridge would be very, very wise and useful.
Well, you know, and I think that's been some of the issue before, you know, when the term improved road is talked about, then that ties that into the design standards. If you're gonna improve a road, you know, therefore, whether it's gonna be the county doing that work, or a, an individual, or a developer doing that work, it should be to the same standards. Well, our design standards are set to where, you know, you're wanting to upgrade a road, but you can't do that unless you buy a ride away, and you have, you know, a lot of these other road characteristics that takes a project and explodes it to where it's a, it's a really big project, very costly, you know, and the timeframe it takes to get, you know, a full design, something like that. And so that's where I think we need to tie everything down into the design standards as well. What's realistic? What do we want?
Well, I agree there, but if you're looking at a developer wanting to put in a road, I can understand that you could hold them at a different standard than what you do a road that has been there for 100 years, that you are landlocked, or you do have these type of limitations of what you can do. If it's something new that's proposed, well, then, then the design standard could be different.
Mm-hmm. And I agree with you, and that's where I think we need to, we still just need to modify some language, and then it just gets into, you know, what the, how we define what we're gonna do. And so, I mean, that, but that's the, one of the things that we really need to hammer out through this whole process, is exactly that. So it's just clear to everybody what we're doing.
The chair brought up at the last meeting, the amount of people that were leaving city to move into the rural areas, and how do you think that that has affected your job and the expectations of what roads should be? And I'll follow up with that, is, I mean, is there, is there an unrealistic expectation, somebody moving from the city to the rural areas and then wanting a city street? I mean, do you see that happening, or is that over-exaggerated?
I'm gonna let Darren tackle that, because he probably deals with that a lot more than I do.
You know, that is a common issue, but that's been happening since early 80s.
Right.
And so, the movement of people from the city to the county does occur. The, one of the things, I'll just, our entrance policy. Prior to, I want to say the late 80s, Mike probably remembers some of that, the county created an entrance policy. Prior to that, if you wanted a house, the county would go in and install a culvert for you. But, so, they quickly realized that that was very costly. So now, if you want a house and a culvert, you have to pay for the installation of that, such as the road designs, that leads to the road design standards that Justin's talking about. If somebody wanted to upgrade an earth road, they had to meet this design standard, which was, was very costly and very expensive for a road that was already there, like you say. So maybe some of those need to be relaxed just a little bit, so we can work within our own regulations, because that actually shuts down some projects.
I understand that. The other side is, somebody moves from the city and wants their road upgraded, and they want the people in the city to pay for it. There's some unfairness to me in that.
One thing I want to ask here, I mean, let's look at it in a realistic thing here, if we look at redefining the road standards and defined gravel road upgrades and everything. At that same time, do we sometimes need to look at how we maintain the roads? I mean, if we're gonna study this, do we need to really study on how, if we've just re, looking at the redefining of the, redefine these, excuse me, design standards, should we maybe look and say, hey, if the practices that we're doing now in maintaining the roads, do we need to look at, on a, maybe a changing, how are we doing that?
You know, we're always looking to improve.
Okay.
Suggestions, or things are always, are taken in hand, we have, we're always trying to improve our maintenance procedures.
Well, and in the last year or two, is like, I've seen, you know, it's like a really, I want to say, a really increased pulling the shoulders and getting some material back up on the roads a little bit, and scraping across from one to the other. When we do that type of thing, do we have to do the 811 or the call dig to find out if there's anything in those roads?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So every time we pull just the shoulders, we still have to do that?
You gotta locate, yes.
Wow, okay. I just, so it is a pretty involved situation.
There's, there's a couple different levels that you don't need to do that. If you're not going below the ditch flow line, typically, we don't need to get a 1 call, because the ditch flow line usually would be where any cable is, and that's just considered a maintenance procedure.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
To follow up on Commissioner Shadwick's remarks, it isn't always the squeaky wheel that causes improvements, or, you also weigh in traffic count, how the road is used, how much the road is used, safety concerns as far as whether an upgrade should take place. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, when you're looking at our existing system, there's two ways to look at it, you know, what's the road characteristics that we have? And then the other, other way to look at it is how it's being used. You know, I think you've got to look at both of those, because it's how it's being used is really what you need to, the road's gotta match how it's being used, especially with the truck traffic.
I know that even in the city, a street might become such a busy street that they'd look to widen that street, put a turning lane down the middle, or make improvements in that manner. Even though the street was usable, it didn't function as well as it could, so improvements need to be made at times.
Right.
Anybody? Appreciate what you have put together here.
Thank you.
Looks like a reasonable, well-thought-out plan, and the next step is to carry on and identify what we've identified, you know, and take it a step further. So, I like it. Thank you for coming before us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. I can keep the microphone from dropping through the table here. A few items to talk about this morning. First off, I wanted to give you an update on the CARES funding. You may recall that this is the billion dollars that the state received from the federal government, 400 million of which they have agreed to pass along to counties. We have now an official number for Celine County. We are expecting $11,26,434 to come our way. I was hopeful that we would also have a resolution by this point, that I could tell you that I'd reviewed it with county counselor, and it would be on your agenda for next Tuesday, but we don't have that yet. The Spark Executive Committee met again yesterday afternoon and went through a resolution, but it has not yet been distributed to counties. There is going to be a webinar this Friday at 3:00 PM, which we are hopeful will have a little bit more information, and so we're continuing to track this. We have formed a staff committee with emergency management, public health. We've discussed the funding with education partners and developing an outreach plan for cities and some of the other smaller districts, so we'll be getting the word out about this funding once we know what the rules are. Second item, the senior center has reopened, went over there yesterday afternoon and took a look at it. If Commissioners have not been over there yet, I would encourage you to go by and take a look at all of the improvements that have been made to the kitchen and the restrooms there on the bottom floor, and just wanted the public to know that they are now serving lunch again. They have, you know, they're doing all the cleaning, and have sanitizer and masks and all that, that stuff for folks who may wish to partake of meals at the senior center these days. Third item, we are a member, Celine County is a member of the National Association of Counties. Every summer, in July, NACO has an annual conference. One of the items of business at that annual conference is to vote for the officers of the organization. This year, with everything going on around COVID-19, they have canceled their annual conference, which was scheduled for Orlando, and are doing a virtual business meeting, which gives us the opportunity to participate this year, because I don't think anybody was planning on going to Orlando in July. But now that it's all online, we have received a voting credential card, and so would invite the commission to see if you want to delegate someone to be your person to sit through that webinar and cast a vote on behalf of Celine County. The fourth thing, just to let you know, Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh will be back in the office tomorrow. I am going to be taking a little bit of time off on Thursday and Friday of this week. I'll be back for next Tuesday's meeting. And last, but not least, I, last Tuesday, gave the commission a memo on the industrial revenue bonds, and was just curious if anybody had any feedback on that, and if there's anything you wanted me to communicate to the Slinac Community Economic Development Organization about that.
It's always been interesting to me how they even benefit from getting an industrial revenue bond. I mean, do they get a lower interest rate?
Typically, the main benefit to the business is the tax break.
Okay.
I, they may get a slightly lower interest rate than they could get commercially, but many times, these are placed with banks anyway, so I think the main benefit is the tax.
Yeah, because the interest rate's only gonna go down if the risk goes down, and we're not guaranteeing the thing, so the risk doesn't go down. Your point about the breaks does make sense, though. Now, do they have to have an IRB to get those tax breaks? Now, do they have to have an IRB to get those tax breaks, those tax abatements? Or can we just, can a governing body just decide to give those tax abatements without an IRB designation? That would be, that was my question I thought of when I left yesterday, last week.
So, I'll double-check with county counselor, but I know that the Commission does have a policy on tax abatements that doesn't mention IRBs.
Right.
So, I assume that that implies that there are other ways that you could give a tax abatement if you so chose.
The research that I have done in speaking with some city, former mayors and city commissioners and representatives and so forth, is that they do get a cheaper rate of interest, although in today's world, I don't see how that can be too much significantly lower, as low as the interest rates are. But I, and I too am a little cloudy on that, Monty, on the two tied together, but I think, I think the, in order to get the tax abatement, there has to be an IRB tied to it, I think. I don't think you can do a tax abatement without an IRB. You can do an IRB without a tax abatement, but what's the point? So, I think that's how it works.
I mean, if you want my feedback, I have no problem necessarily with it, because we're not guaranteeing the loan, which I think that a lot of, the public thinks that you're doing that, you're backing the loan, but you're not, but...
That's true. The, whoever we send, sell the bond to, or whatever, would be the one that it would be on the hook.
Tax bear stock guaranteeing.
But the person with the business is the one that's essentially on the hook. So, I think what our administrator's getting at is, where do we stand on this, and do we, I don't think the applicant needs to come before us again. I think it's time, I think we have to make a decision, say yes or no. Is that the process that you would anticipate?
Well, certainly, I've had, Saline County Community Economic Development has contacted me and said, hey, where's the Commission stand on this, and, you know, do, what do I tell the applicant? Are, you know, are we gonna try and go forward with an IRB or not? And so, I mean, if there's additional research you want me to do and bring back to you, and before you're prepared to make a decision, or just trying to gauge how to go forward with this.
Maybe you can clarify to me, were they asking for a tax abatement? Were they wanting a relief from possible property taxes for an extended time, or were they wanting?
Yeah, they absolutely were wanting a tax abatement. They, when they opened their facility in Hutchinson, they got a tax abatement, and, you know, they were, that's one of their asks. You know, the, there are a number of considerations that I outlined in my memo for you all around, you know, what that looks like. You know, do you request a payment in lieu of taxes? You know, do you give them the full 100% abatement? Do you scale it back? Is there, you know, consideration with the fact that this is a business that may have competitors in the community that might not have received the same level of abatement, and, you know, how does that play out, and so forth? So...
Well, even though this land is county land right now, I just can't see this project going forward without a huge involvement of the city, whether it be annexation or whatever. I really confused on why it's the county they've approached for the tax abatements when it's gonna be inside the city before completion. Plus, we do have, we do have existing businesses here. To give tax abatements to retail coming in, it's kind of a hard one for me to swallow, when they have competition within your community already that are providing the same services. To me, that just gives them a foot up on others, so I could be wrong, but...
My understanding, to be, to be kind of blunt about it, my understanding of why they're asking us is because they already asked the city, and the city said no.
Well, they have to ask us, because the property is in the county. That's the process, as I understand it. I mean, the city's not gonna give an IRB or a tax abatement to something that's governed by the county, and vice versa. We're not gonna, someone that's gonna build a, something in Saline, inside the city limits is not gonna come to the county. And as far as the tax abatement goes, that was in their applications, the applicant's process, it was gonna be a 10-year, 100% tax abatement. That's what they want. And that's what we're gonna have to say, yes, or no, or we'll give you 50%, or we'll give you 50% for five years. We can counter if we wish to, but I know where I stand on this, but, you know, I don't know where anyone else stands, and as far as...
Mr. Chair, let me try. There's a lot of questions being raised again. It's only been presented to us one time. Would it be possible to schedule another meeting, maybe next week, and include county council and the appraiser? He plays a big role in this, and discuss the whole issue again.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy with that, too. And also, I would add, you know, most communities have a formula that takes kind of the guesswork out of all of this, because of who you know and whatnot, and, you know, you know, how many jobs are created gives you so much, and how much money you spend gives you so much. And there's an actual formula, and maybe they, I don't know. And that takes a lot of our guesswork out in just saying, oh, yeah, we'd like somebody, let's give them 50%. And so, I'd like to, I'm not against giving tax abatements to people coming in, but I wanna be real careful about just opening a Pandora's Box and just giving it to anybody, because I agree, if it's competition to somebody that's in town already, that's tough.
Well, it's pretty clear to me what's going on. I mean, you're talking to business that's gonna have eight employees, and they're wanting 100% tax abatement, and it's gonna be a retail, I mean, it's pretty unusual to give retail a tax abatement. I don't think it's necessarily unusual for the IRB portion of it.
Right.
But I know where I stand on it, and I don't, I don't need another meeting, but if some others want that, then let's schedule it for next week. Let's have it next week. Let's make a decision next week.
Will do. Thank you.
Anything else?
I would like to back up to that last comment. One of the reasons why I would like it again is I'd like to, maybe no public shows up, but it gives the public a chance to say something, too, about it. So, again, nobody might show up.
And they didn't show up the last time.
I agree.
You were gone that meeting, but they, there was nobody here then at that meeting either, but they may show up if they think that we're going to. But I don't know how the public is gonna get information unless they're watching the show, because we're not covered in the media, at least from a print media standpoint.
Fair enough. You're right. You're right.
But I, that would be the normal procedure.
I know.
The opposition would show up, or the support would show up.
Right.
But...
Those times have changed.
We see a lot of empty chairs.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just comment one thing, is that in listening to them last week, is that, it scared me when I left here, is that they talk about eight to 10 people, and when he made the comment that they would be a full-line Kubota Land Pride dealership with all their products, I don't see how they could even begin to be a full-line of anything with only that few employees, technicians, sales reps, anything. They couldn't, they couldn't understand or know the whole product line. It was kind of a thought, okay, we're gonna come in here with all the products that they have, and only be this, this many employees. But they know their business, they know what they're gonna do, but it was kind of a scary situation to me, but that's my only comment there on that.
Any Commissioner comments and announcements? Not, it appears that we have a, an executive session.
Do we have a timeframe on that, so I can make a motion?
Okay. Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess the meeting and reconvene in this room, 107B, in 10 minutes, or 10:10, and this is for attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second that we move to recess the meeting and reconvene in 107B in 10 minutes for the purpose of an executive session, attorney-client privilege. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're in executive session. With action to be taken.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, notwithstanding the potential for conflict of interest between the county and the city, I move that the county consents to the joint representation of the city and the county by Terrell Mock and the law firm of Fisher, Patterson, Saylor and Smith.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve the motion of joint representation from, of the firm by both the city of Saline and Saline County. Are there any questions? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Or is there anything else to come before the Commission? If not, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So, moved?
Second.
Moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're adjourned.